All right. Hello. Good evening. Welcome to this August 31st, 2020 regular meeting of your West Orange Board of Education. Mr. Calabano.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I have a motion for consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of August 17th and 24th.
So moved.
A second.
All right, Mr. Calabano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mr. Pennyclip? Vice President Trig Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right. Before we get to the superintendent report, I just want to take a second to congratulate Ms. Trig Scales, who has achieved her New Jersey School Boards Association new board member certification, which requires you to take a number of credits and attend a number of county meetings and other things. And it's really a significant commitment of time and energy to get this done. And you really learn a lot through the process. And I just want to congratulate her. Here's her certificate. And good job. And you know, everyone else should definitely reach out to Charlene and check your own credits because it is achievable. You just need to usually do a couple of extra training sessions and it's super worthwhile. You know, School Boards Association does a lot of really good programs and it's great to have you join me in certification. We're both now certifiable or something. All right. And with that, Dr. Cascone.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the community, board colleagues here, joining us to present on a number of items. The first item in the superintendent's update is coming from representatives from board employee representatives of our Diversity Equity and Access Committee. And tonight I'm very pleased to have join us Ms. Kimia Jackson, who is Assistant Principal at Redwood School and Washington School. We have with us Beatrice Hanrady, who is our K-5 ELA supervisor, Mr. Michael Figurito, who is our K-12 supervisor, pre-K through 12 supervisor of social studies, Mr. Lionel Hush, the principal of Roosevelt School and Roosevelt Middle School, and our relatively newly arrived Executive Director Personnel and Special Projects, Dr. Vespiagnani. There are going to be several focuses to this presentation. It's really an update on some of the work that's been ongoing over the summer, which I felt was really important for our community to see because I think it's some excellent work that's been going in the area of professional development in curriculum and programming as well as human resources. And so at this time, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Ms. Kimia Jackson, who I'd also like to publicly commend, who's taken a lot of leadership this summer and along with her colleagues here in keeping this work going. While Ms. DeMendez and I have been keenly focused on some of the reopening things, this group has been a capable detachment doing this work on our behalf. So again, thank you, and we look forward to hearing the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. So as the acting chair of the Diversity Equity and Access Committee, I just wanted to share what we've been working on and what has been going on in the past. So the first thing we worked on this summer was creating a student survey focused on race. I know last year there was one about cultural climate or a climate survey, but this year we wanted to definitely focus on race. And that was partly due to Instagram posts found on, found and called Black at West Orange, as well as some incidences that we've heard about in the past. So we'll be delivering that survey to students once the school year begins. And with that information, that will help garner what we do further when we're creating programming, curriculum, and things of that nature. So these are just a few of the posts. And when we coded these posts, the first 42 of them focused on microaggressions. Several of them focused on staff and some of them curriculum. So after creating the survey, we decided that we needed to really focus on PD because we not only created a survey for students, but we also created one for staff to ask what type of training they would like to receive when it comes to implicit bias and race and how they would like to receive it. So so far, we have organized an ed camp that will be taking place on September 26th here at Redwood School. If you would like to join, you can always put your phone up and scan to be able to join the ed camp. And that ed camp is focused on aligning curriculum to the New Jersey Amistad legislation. The other PD that we're having is with Dr. Wilson, who is an expert on race and urban studies at Montclair State University. He'll be working with our K through five staff to teach them about American history and how they can align American history to what they're doing in the classroom already. Next, we'll have Dr. Calfani, who is also a West Orange resident, who'll be working with our sixth through 12th grade staff to teach them also about history and to maybe possibly give them information that they did not know already. Without our administrative team, we had Coach Kamari Gafford Davis work with us last year to teach the administrative team about cultural sensitivity and implicit bias. And we are hoping to have Dr. Janice Johnson and Mr. Scott Dias talk to us about our demographics pointedly for each of the schools, so we'll know our student population and how we can serve them best. Over the summer, we had several teachers and other staff members attend the Amistad Symposium. And they've not only attended it this year, but they've been attending over a decade. And what that does is teach our staff more about African-American history and how to align it to the curriculum. The other thing that has been taking place are summer book clubs. Some of the books that have been read either schoolwide or outside of school have been So You Want to Talk About Race, Stamped, Stamped From the Beginning, White Fragility. And we're also thinking about adding Blind Spot to our book list. Our hope is to jigsaw these book clubs together so we can present about our findings on the topic of race and implicit bias to our staff members. The other thing we plan to do this year is during staff meetings, we would like to explore scholarly articles and other articles that attend to anti-bias standards found with teaching tolerance. So some of these articles will be about African-American vernacular English, once again implicit bias, color blindness, and other topics that align to those anti-bias standards and to common beliefs. Now I'm going to move on with Beatrice Hanrady and Michael Figurito. They're going to tell you a little bit about the lesson planning and social justice standards we would like to attend to this year and move it.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Research as well as best practices indicate that one of the ways to enhance diversification of the social studies curriculum is to incorporate diverse nonfiction texts within the classroom. In addition, in the social studies curricula effective this year, we have now created separate columns for all the social studies mandates, New Jersey Amistad, Holocaust and Genocide, and the LGBTQIA and Disabilities mandate. Under each column now contain additional lessons, readings, as well as resources, which will make it easier for our staff across the district to locate the lessons, then implement the aforementioned lessons in their classroom. This upcoming school year, we are rewriting our social studies K-5 curriculum, in which we are selecting curriculum writers who have a strong social studies background, excellent pedagogical skills, and experience incorporating nonfiction diverse texts within the classroom. Is at this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mrs. Hanrady, who will discuss the diverse texts and social justice standards.
Good evening. So the elementary ELA department is currently in the early phases of working towards addressing the need to become more diverse and inclusive within our ELA curriculum. Over the summer, I reached out to some faculty, actually all the faculty, and we began to form a committee to look at our materials and resources just to begin evaluating and auditing our mentor texts and to start researching some texts we'd like to include. We met once in July and then we met once in August. And during this time, we began evaluating and auditing the mentor texts for diversity, inclusivity in the areas of author, race, and gender relevancy. We evaluated texts to see if they served as windows, which is a resource that offers a view into someone's experience. In the aspect of mirrors, does the story reflect one's culture? Does it help build one's self-identity? And as a sliding glass door, which are the books that allow readers to walk into the story and become part of the world that's created by the author, which is one reason why author relevance is so crucial to have as well. We were also auditing the text in comparison to the identities and the experience particularly of our West Orange students and our families here. And we're looking for the text to address the four domains of the anti-bias education, being the identity, diversity, justice, and action, which Ms. Jackson will probably go more deeper into. And at this point, our next steps are now that school's back in session, to open up the volunteers again to come join the committee in case everybody wasn't available to come join us in the summer. We definitely want to afford more opportunity for faculty to join. Then collaboratively with the committee, begin to shape some short-term and long-term goals in the area of our ELA work. And my goal is to really just keep this committee ongoing as we evolve and enhance. It shouldn't be a committee that it's just set out for a year. This is a long-term committee. We can just keep enhancing the work within our ELA curricula to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students, our staff, and our community. And I'm going to continue to partner and work with Ms. Jackson and Mike to work with the standard on a progressive continuum to help build that awareness, interest, desire, and action within the ELA curriculum, selecting the text. And again, I guess we're in the early phases and I'm looking forward to working more with the committee and shaping out those short and long-term goals for our district. Thank you.
So there are many different culturally responsive standards that we can follow. But since we have already started using teaching tolerance, anti-bias standards to align our diverse text, we decided that this would possibly be the standard model that we would use. So identity would be on the first rung to talk about a student's identity, who they are, and to hopefully empower them or for them to find power within themselves. Then diversity, so they're now moving beyond just knowing about themselves and knowing about more people and cultures and ethnicities, then moving towards justice where they are undoing biases that they may have had or others around them. And then action would move towards actually doing something about those biases that may occur or may be present. So next, we're going to have Mr. Lionel Hush and Dr. Vespiagnani to tell you about our next steps as far as the hiring practices.
Right. So first and foremost, we would like to continue to host in-person diversity job fair, which we've done for the past two years. If that's not possible, then we'll have to put Phil Santiago's team to the test and see if we can get a virtual diversity job fair this spring. We also look to expand our recruiting efforts by connecting with the tri-state area university and colleges of New York and Philadelphia areas, as well as broadening our reach to make connections at the career service departments of the HBCUs in the surrounding area, specifically speaking to Lincoln University, Howard University, and Chaney University. Lastly, we are in the process of creating a uniform interviewing process that focuses on the knowledge, skills, and abilities of the candidate with a defined rubric to match, all of which will be aligned with the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission.
And in addition to what Mr. Hush has shared and from an HR perspective, and I think what we've heard throughout this presentation is that we can't simply look at the recruitment piece in isolation. It's really a matter of connecting that to what our induction program looks like, what does our professional development program look like, how are we supporting and ultimately retaining diverse candidates? So developing partnerships with schools of education, local partnerships with organizations is really critical. I've recently had a conversation with the career coordinator at Rutgers University, where we can post for free on their career services site through Handshake, which is an online platform. And this is something we'll be looking to expand to other universities and schools of education who also use Handshake. I had a great conversation with a senior human resource generalist at the Metro YMCA of the Oranges. There are seven branches there to develop a potential partnership for staff wellness program and ultimately an employee assistance program, essentially developing a repository of resources for staff. We're also looking into posting on their external site so that again, we are expanding our reach and recruitment efforts, which is really critical. So when we are developing these types of programs, it essentially differentiates the district further as an outstanding workplace. So when we're out recruiting and being peerless in our efforts to do so, we are able to share some of the great programs and processes that we have to support candidates who come to us with different beliefs, different perspectives, and different experiences, ultimately with the goal to diversify staff, to mirror that of our student population. Other unique ways, in addition to what the district has already set forth, by way of a new staff orientation program which runs for two years. Of course, new hires also receive mentoring for one year as they are gearing towards their standard certification through the professional certificate program. I'm implementing a 30, 60-day, 90-check-in for new hires to support them as they acclimate to the district. So just some additional ways that we are developing to further support, ensuring that we have qualified diverse candidates for not only teaching positions, but for all staff positions. Thank you, Dr. Vespiagnani, Mr. Hush, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Hanrady, and Mr. Figurito. At this time, I would, is that, oh, you have, you have more. Very good. Because I could listen to this all night. So by all means, please.
So along with our hiring practices, we are planning to invite students to be a part of subcommittees. And we also are inviting our teachers as experts to moderate book clubs, create school-based DACT committees and/or diversity teams, and to deliver more professional development to our staff. So in creating this presentation, I wanted to understand our district a little better. And what I found, as I said in our surveys, is that we're struggling with microaggressions and we're at the awareness stage. So here you have the Ada model, which is normally a marketing tool, but it's so apropos to what's going on here at West Orange. So for the most part, we're in the awareness stage because we're reading books, we're gaining more information. But a lot of us are also at the interest stage where we're taking classes to learn more and we're doing some independent work. Some of us are at the desire stage where we're actually taking what we've learned and we're placing it into our schools and using it in our classrooms. And then some of us at the action stage where we all would like to be, where we're taking action and we're actually doing something to make a shift in diversity here in West Orange. So so far, what we've done, I know this is very small, so I'll read it to you. But for awareness, before the diversity team came together this summer, we were already doing race discussions, new staff orientation based on diversity. We already had speakers come in for different topics, LGBTQ PD at Roosevelt and West Orange High School. We've had the Garden State Equality PD at Roosevelt and Liberty. And we also have cultural books in the LMC. This year, we are planning to build DACT teams or diversity teams, schoolwide or grade level wise. We're still working on the pieces that will go along with that. When it comes to interest, in the past, some of our staff have taken Holocaust education classes through facing history, facing ourselves, and received college credits, as well as attending Amistad symposiums over the last decade. To show desire, our staff have used what they've learned to orchestrate book clubs independent of policies or mandates. We've also had the African-American Heritage Club have discussions about race this summer. We've had intentional lessons, as Mr. Hush said, diversity job fairs, cultural clubs at the middle school and high school. We would like to include more conversations about race and other biases. As far as the action stage, we've had multiple job fairs, and I am the product of one in 2004. So we started many years ago at Washington School, Washington Elementary School, and we've also had them at Liberty Middle School. We've had specific school and teacher presentations like cultural nights focused museums, global read alouds, et cetera, multicultural dinners at West Orange High School. And as Mr. Figurito explains, we have the online social studies curriculum aligned to the Amistad legislation. Moving forward, we would hope to have accountability measures for staff and students. So we're thinking that we may need a district audit where we stand, where we have someone who stands outside of our district to see or to tell us what they see, so we can work on making our district even better. We would also like to have uniform anti-bias lesson planning standards and training. Hopefully by the end of this year or moving into the following year, we're aligning K through five texts to teaching tolerance standards, as we said previously. In progress, we have K through 12 infusion of more diverse perspectives in the curriculum through social studies. And we are also going to have ongoing anti-bias training for all staff members. And that ends our presentation. Thank you.
I'm really glad I let you finish there, Ms. Jackson. That was a strong finish. Thank you again. And this time I would just turn the mic back over to Mr. Alper in the event you wanted to facilitate Q and A.
Sure, absolutely. Board, any questions? We can start as we usually do with Mr. Rothstein.
If I can find my unmute button. Yeah, I mean, actually, I'm sure that I have questions. What I would love is to get the presentation again so that I could really better formulate the questions I've got. That was a lot to take in. And I was taking notes on what an impressive approach and start this is. And really want to offer my gratitude to the team for what you're putting together here. I guess I'm going to stop rambling because I don't have a question together in my head at the moment. Except that, as I said, I would love to be able to reach back out again after I have a chance to read through it in more detail.
Ms. Trig Scales?
Kudos. That was incredible. That was an awesome amount of work that's been done in a short amount of time. So I commend the committee, all of the teachers who've worked over the summer. I am most impressed, most impressed. As Mr. Rothstein said, there's a lot to chew on there. And there are some things that I've never heard before. And we're all in a learning mode here. The last thing we talked about was on, that you talked about, Ms. Jackson, was ongoing anti-bias training. What do we see? What do we foresee there? How's that going to look? How are we going to deliver it? Over what period of time?
So when I say ongoing, anti-bias training doesn't end in a year. So right now, we have partnerships with Montclair State University, their Montclair State Education Renewal Department. So we have Dr. Wilson by way of that partnership. So he'll be coming in not to only do one, but several trainings with us. He already actually started with Redwood before we closed for the end of the year. We're also, we do have a list of other resources for training as far as lesson planning goes. I did have a conversation with Dr. Kathy Key. I believe she's the University of North Carolina. I may be misstating that, but she created also a lesson plan tool that's similar to the teaching tolerance standards. So she's also willing to do training for us. Coach Kamari Gafford Davis, she plans on doing four-hour trainings with us to then teach us to be trainers so we can deliver that information and training to our staff. So we are in the works of organizing how we would like to do that training and to hopefully give ourselves enough information so we can do it within our, within West Orange and not always have to reach out. We do have Ms. Deborah Cohen, who I spoke with. She's one of our teachers here. We talked about having conversations with race. She's done that in her community, so she's willing to do that piece. Dr. Carrie Orange is willing to host a book club for us, hopefully with Blind Spot. So we do have different things that we're working on, but we want to make sure that everything is in place before we give you everything.
Well, the committee has touched everything. Like I said, I am so impressed that so much was accomplished in such a short amount of time. I'm also really happy to see that we're using our local talent. And you know, Dr. Calfani and Dr. Johnson, that's really impressive. The Amistad, you mentioned that our teachers have been going for the training at Kane for the last decade. Do we know how many teachers that has affected? And do they come back and turnkey? How does that actually work?
So I'm happy you asked that question. This summer, I think we had between 10 or 12 teachers who did attend. I know that that group of teachers, they're working together to, well, first of all, they have a presentation they have to do for Amistad by September 4th. And it's quite meaty. I was a part of that as well, but I don't have time to answer the questions. So was Mike Figurito. But they are planning to come together to flush through the presentations that they've learned, which were really, really hefty topics. And I'm hoping once they finish that piece, they can then turnkey that information to the staff. I know Anthony Edelman, I think that's his name, or Edelstein, I may be misstating his name. But he's spearheading that piece. I've been going to Amistad since 2009, and I'm sure you, well, I think you heard about my wax museums I used to host in my classrooms. I didn't, my classroom, I didn't stop at my wax museums, but I made sure that Black History and All History was infused for 180, 184 days.
Again, just bravo, bravo.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Merklinger.
I just want to commend everyone for just an overwhelming presentation. I think that was really great. A lot of information. And I echo Gary and Terry Whit. There's just a lot to take in and so much was done. That's just super impressive. I'm really happy to hear, you know, our involvement with Keene University. I know that's been kind of put out there for some time. So glad to hear it's actually being more utilized than what we maybe have heard in the past. That's great to hear. And I'm loving that we're empowering our teachers to come back and work within our own school district to bring back some of the items that they've learned or are learning and to share with the community. So that's really great. And just from my previous role in HR, it's great to hear that we're working with the Handshake platform. That's a great method for retaining and obtaining, or I guess implementing, hiring processes. So I'm glad to hear that we are going to be using that more with our partnerships and colleges. So just a great job all around by all the partners in the committee. So thank you.
All right, Ms. Pennyclip?
Thank you, Mr. Alper. And thanks to all of you for the wonderful presentation. You've certainly been really busy over the summer. And I'm looking forward to seeing what you come up with this year. I do have a few questions. I wanted to understand a little bit better about how you're going to be using the teachers as experts. You talked a little bit about that. So could you tell me a little bit more about that?
So I know Dr. Carrie Orange, she's been doing her work in equity for a very long time. She has her doctorate in education, so we would hopefully use her expertise to then deliver PD to our teachers. She's already doing that with, I think it's called EdLab. I might be misquoting that. But I feel like if we already have experts within our district, then we need not go further unless we have to. I witnessed Deborah Cohen do a conversation on race in her town. I participated, and it was magnificent. She had all people from all walks of life there having serious conversations just by lending starting questions and then having authentic conversations that will lead to more conversations that they have throughout the year.
That sounds great. Yeah, I appreciate you using internal experts. That's wonderful. I have a couple of the questions. How are you going to determine what you're doing now is moving the needle? And I know you talked a little bit about, you know, seeing what was happening in the microaggressions on the Instagram page, Black and West Orange, and wondering, you know, is there another follow-on survey at the end of the year? What are your plans?
Great question. So when I presented this presentation to one of our teachers this evening, she asked the same thing. So she said, how are you going to hold yourself accountable? And I said, well, through surveys. And she said, well, surveys are great, but what else? So when I talked to Dr. Carrie Orange about us and bias and training, she offered information about a company that can do a district audit and then give us suggestions on how we should move forward after they step outside to watch what goes on within. So I'm hoping to have a conversation with that organization as well.
Oh, great. Because I did, that was one of my other questions was about the district audit. So thank you for answering that in advance. And then do you, is there a plan for how many teachers we're planning to send to the Amistad over the next year or so? Is that going to be ongoing and then, or is there going to be a point where we cut off and then are able to kind of train the trainer within, within house?
So once again, great question. Amistad invites all teachers or all, not just educators, but people throughout the state of New Jersey. So it's up to the teachers to be involved. We don't send them. We sent, well, you know what, Michael can tell you a little bit more about that. I can tell you about my experiences because I go almost every year because there's always something new to learn. But I'll let Michael tell you a little bit more about Amistad and how he gets our teachers involved.
Absolutely. So this year, Amistad did it virtually. And we, I reached out to all the socialized teachers, grade six to 12, and then all the socialized teachers in grades four and five, and then as well as the building principals to spread out the message. We also use it through social media to let people know about the Amistad Conference virtually. I was attending it this year with Ms. Jackson and about 12 other staff members. Last year, Amistad was going to have their summer conference down in Jamestown, Virginia. One of our teachers did apply. It was accepted. It was only going to be a limited number of people because New Jersey Amistad Commission was going to cover the cost. One of our members was accepted. Unfortunately, the funding was cut to the New Jersey Amistad Commission and the trip never happened last year. Years prior, we always reach out to the staff in the summer. Usually Amistad tells us maybe about a month ahead of time. This is when it is usually in the summer, it is free during the school year, though there usually is a cost when you like send staff members to Kane, but we always encourage, always encourage all of our staff, not only to do it once, but to keep doing it. I mean, the purpose of education is to continuously grow. Never say stagnant. It is ongoing to keep getting better and better and better. So I always, we always encourage our staff to attend such symposiums.
That's great.
And along with Amistad, I did reach out to Dr. Stephanie Wilson, who is the Director of the Amistad Commission. I asked her if she would be able to organize administrative training because administrators sometimes will not have that, that time during the summer to attend. So I gave her a few suggestions. I'm hoping that she has some sort of training that she can do for not only school district administrators, but board members as well. Maybe just one day to give us information on what the teachers will be learning during that summer symposium. So I'm going to follow up with her as well.
That sounds great. And my final question, you mentioned conversations on race. Is that based on Gary Singleton's work and his book on courageous conversations?
So that's a great question. It wasn't based on a book. It was based on something that's necessary. But after actually experiencing it with Deborah Cohen and experiencing the peace and, and the safe space, I felt that that's something that we can work on. So it's not, unfortunately, it's not, it's not based on a book, but it's based on things that are just necessary.
Great. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I want to thank everyone on the committee for that. That's, you know, very thorough. And I think like everyone else, I'm looking forward to getting a look at the electronic version of that because I'm sure I'll have some more questions to relay through Dr. C. One question that comes to mind now, I think for Mr. Hush, when you talk about the potential partnerships with HBCUs, are there mechanisms to get the kids? Because I know a lot of the HBCUs that have education programs are not obviously local to New Jersey, but I know there's a lot in the Carolinas and Florida. Are there programs to kind of get those kids up here for interviews to do student teach? I know you usually would do student teaching where you're going to school. So I think we're at a disadvantage, but I'm wondering what sort of hooks those schools are creating to make it easier for schools in the north that are looking to get access.
Well, we attempted in the past to go down and actually recruit from the campuses themselves, didn't find that to be too beneficial. So really what we were looking at is partnering up with their career service department. But we can post whatever job opportunities we have here in the West Orange schools. And therefore those who are interested in coming to the New Jersey area may have, may have originally been from the New Jersey area and want to return back home now know of the job postings in this area and not just in areas of the schools. So we wanted to, and we already reached out to the universities that are closest to us in Pennsylvania, two in Pennsylvania, one in the DC area, to try to establish that connection so that when we do post positions available, that they'll, they'll be able to advertise them for us in those universities.
That's a good idea. I know one idea that had come up and I can't remember, you know, on what level it came up or how seriously it was being discussed or if it was just sort of a, you know, hey, what if, you know, what if sort of idea was that maybe we could start something at the high school to sort of try to get a homegrown program to sort of grab kids who might be interested in education before they go off into college and try to get them interested. And then, you know, after they're off, you know, they're coming back to West Orange, but we've, at the high school level, gotten them interested in pursuing a career in education as opposed to in another field.
Right. I know a lot of, a lot of high school programs do have like a tomorrow's teacher's program. I'm not 100% sure if West Orange has that. They may have some, some form of a program where they get the kids into the, into the schools, they get them interested in education, kind of show them the ropes of it. And that's something that they then further pursue when they go into their college and universities. And that is a talent pool that we like to try to pull from. We do have the opportunity to, to hire a lot of our in-house talent. I know I've hired some myself. But it would be a great benefit to us if we did have a program of such to kind of get the kids into the elementary schools and middle schools, get them to really understand the ropes of education and continue to move forward with that type of real choice.
Definitely, definitely. Thank you. Yeah, I think that was really great. And Dr. Miss Magnati, you had a good point near the end of yours about, you know, all these things that are done, they really do differentiate. West Orange is an outstanding place to work. So glad to see all this. Thank you. Dr. C, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. And this time, our esteemed guests will, though not present on the screen, will remain present as attendees if during the public comment on agenda items, there were questions that we might need to call upon them to answer. So thank you again. And have a good evening, folks.
And those for our guests, don't touch your computer. Your screen's going to change, but we're just going to make an attendee. Thank you.
You know, it's as a leader, you know, nothing, nothing is exciting or gratifying when you have, have team members who just grab onto stuff and run with it and do so in a great way and in a way that is really very well aligned with, you know, kind of what, you know, your expectations and charges that you've kind of put out and then you just go and get after it. It's, it's, it's really, it's really exciting to see that. And, you know, in spite of the fact that we've been managing a lot this summer on top of this, I think it holds true to our commitment to continue to move our initiatives forward and not be just simply caught in this inertia due to the fact that we're managing this pandemic. So again, great job. And now a topic perhaps equally as, as important, but not nearly as interesting, is that of ventilation. So at last, last board meeting, we had Michael Wosny from EI Associates, our Architects of Record, come and present. Since that, since that time, since last week, we've been doing a lot of conferring on the matter, a lot of research, a lot, a lot of meetings, a lot of thought. We've had an opportunity to discuss it as administration and then to discuss it as a board. And so I'd like to share with you, you know, basically what our recommended path forward will be as it relates to our ventilation issues. So just to kind of reiterate, we had a number of spaces in our, in our schools, approximately 90 spaces in our schools that had classrooms that were missing, that had, had no windows and HVAC or had windows but no HVAC. And so we understood that, that we needed to, to propose a plan that would, that would offer remediation to this. And if recall, there were two, two different courses of action presented. There was the use of the bipolar ionization needlepoint technology, which is essentially a mechanical installation that can either be installed onto a rooftop mechanical unit, or it can actually be installed on an individual classroom mechanical unevent. You know, unit, if you will. That was the technology that more recently has been empirically tested by the FAA on airplanes and has been shown to be effective in the mitigation or containment of COVID-19 in the air, in the ambient environment. The second option was the use of mobile classroom purifiers. Now, there is some really incredible technology being put out there right now. And in many ways, it mirrors the technology that is in that, that needlepoint technology, but it has not been empirically tested on COVID, right? So we were presented with this choice. Do we spend eight, up to, up almost a million dollars, like between $700,000 and $800,000 on these mobile units, which go for about $2,600 each? And that is if you want the ionization, the UV and the HEPA filters. That is, if you want the unit that is actually going to do what we need it to do, you're talking $2,600 a unit. And that's $800,000. Let's talk about that for it. So we have a solution that is not necessarily empirically tested to control COVID-19 in the air. And on top of that, once we get beyond this, this is a unit that ideally needs to sit in the center of the classroom. Now, in a socially distanced classroom where we have desks six feet apart, it's actually relatively easily to put this unit in the center of the classroom whereby there used to be a desk. But when we start putting 23 desks in a classroom and we return back to normal, because don't forget, even outside of the pandemic, we still have ventilation issues that need to be addressed. They don't go away with the, you know, with the, the going away of the pandemic. So now we would have this rather pricey piece of equipment and we'd have to find a place to put it in what we know can be a somewhat crowded classroom with 23 students and certainly couldn't be put in the center of the classroom and therefore would not even be operating appropriately or as effectively as it needs to be. Or on the other hand, we could go with the installation of the needlepoint technology, which would be a more intermediate solution that would then, even after the pandemic, be there in order to give us an intermediate phase into ultimately perhaps a referendum. And then we could address some of the more serious HVAC issues we have in the short term where we have classrooms that don't have UNIVENTS and things of that nature. Now, one of the things we talked about last week was what's the difference in timeline between these two things? Because we know we need to be considerate of this. We know our parent community wants our students, you know, to be in school in order for us to implement this hybrid model as soon as we can. It's gosh, you know, that's a, that sounds like a big operation and how long is it really going to take to do that? So we spent a lot of time really focusing on this needlepoint technology and, and how expeditious we could be with this, right? And, and in our more recent conversations with the architects, we are, we are actually very optimistic about how we can do this. So I want to lay the timeline out for you. First, the plan and the timeline. So our plan, as proposed, is to move forward with the installation of the needlepoint technology, bipolar ionization technology in all of the facilities where we have rooftops. And that's generally Liberty and the newer sections of the high school. We would then, in all other spaces, install it on the UNIVENT, the UNIVENT installations. For any classrooms that do not have a UNIVENT but windows, we would utilize one of the bipolar ionization devices. We would not utilize, we would not utilize any of the spaces for instruction that have neither windows or mechanical ventilation, even with the technology. And that would take 16 of our instructional spaces district-wide offline. And those are all small group instructions. So that would not be any large classrooms, grade level classrooms, which is good news because we can be creative in how we create these small group instructional spaces, perhaps elsewhere in the building. And, and this would, the way this would, would play out would be our architects would present us with a proposal to do the work, which essentially would be to identify all of the mechanical supplies, hardware, all those things that were necessary to do the job, as well as the electrical drawings. We would have that by the September 10th meeting. It would take approximately two weeks to develop the proposal. We learned today, very good news, that the vendor that provides the materials is actually under state contracts. So we would not have to go out to bid for the materials. We would have to bid out for the work. And we'd want to obviously get as much human capacity we could so that we could do this as quickly as possible. And we could actually bid out the contracting work contemporaneously with, with the development of the proposal, which means that we could be breaking ground, so to speak, on this project very beginning of October, which, what I understand, it takes about an hour or two to install one of these units on a UNIVENT that it puts, it sets us up well for the beginning of November for our elementary schools. This, we will obviously work, you will have our contractors work as quickly and expeditiously as possible. And I'm not saying it's out of the question that we could be online at the middle schools and the high school, but it is looking very promising that we can have our elementary schools up and running by the date we indicated for November 9th with this bipolar ionization technology. The project would cost somewhere between a million and a million two. Okay, that includes soup to nuts, materials, labor, the ionization units that we'd be installing in some places. And Mr. Calavano did some good work with our capital reserve. First time in many years that we've been able to carry over capital reserve. And we're optimistic that we'd be able to fund the entire of this project out of either capital or emergency reserve. So we would not have to go into the local budget to do that. And we would be largely on our timeline for November 9th. And we will have a solution in place that would, that would prepare us to be able to, to, to really stand behind our air quality in the years to come before we're able to get a more larger referendum passed to do wholesale changes to our HVAC equipment. So that is my report, Mr. President, and I'm, I'm open to questions.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Rothstein, anything?
Sorry, thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry. Can you just remind me of the timing again? So the, the architects, you said we could have a proposal in place to be voted on by the 9/10 meeting? And we can begin the bidding process for the work while that's in development?
Correct.
Okay. And so what? If we moved forward with this plan, do you have an estimate of roughly what would be the earliest date that we could begin the work?
I mean, from, you know, based upon our estimates, we could begin the, if all goes according to plan, the first week in October.
Beginning first week in October. Okay. And
That would, Mr. Rothstein, I apologize. That would be really dependent upon the turnaround time for getting the inventory in.
Okay, right, of course. And then would, with there being partial school opening in places, would that, would there be any, any conflict or any disruption to education happening on school site locations while that work was being done? How would that be mitigated? Or is that still in the planning phase?
Yeah, so obviously in this, in this initial phase, the, the number of students operating in our buildings will be fairly minimal. In the first several weeks of the school, very few. We do have some plans to start bringing in preliminary plans to try and bring in certain populations earlier than November and safe spaces. But there would be very little, if any, intermingling and that could be coordinated with the location of the work to ensure that, that there was not co-mingling of workspaces with, with instructional spaces.
So it might be possible to temporarily relocate some classes so that they weren't disrupted during the work?
Correct.
Great. Yeah, I think, I think that's it for right now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Triggs, girls.
Alrighty. I'm, I'm really pleased that because my question last week was about throwing good money after bad. And so I'm pleased that we're looking at making an investment over the long term, rather than just doing a stopgap measure. And as Dr. Cascone said, these units would just be sitting there and would not necessarily help us once we get a full complement of students back in the classroom. So this is helping us as we move forward in reducing what we would be asking for in a referendum, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay, so if we talk about for the elementary schools, it looks like we would be on time looking at that November 9th date. What do we foresee for our middle and high schools?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, I think at this point, you know, it's, it's, you know, we're not down in the weeds enough of the, of the project to understand that. But knowing that every day there would be work progressing. Of course, Liberty and the high school, the benefit of those two schools is that good portions of those facilities, in the case of Liberty, it would be exclusively a rooftop installation. So potentially Liberty could be coming online simultaneously with the elementary school. Of course, we'd want our, our middle schools to, you know, to be operating in sync, right? And to ensure equitable opportunities for all our students. But any space, you know, it's, I don't want to, I, I, I prefer not to throw a date out at this time as Triggs Scales, but I will be prepared but I will be prepared to follow up with with Mr. Wozni, the architects, and be prepared to have an update at our next meeting as to what we foresee being a prospective opening date, if not November ninth for those schools. And that is not out of the realm of possibility, depending upon the number of contractors we can bring in, how often we can have them in, availability of the inventory. But potentially, we could be completely online by November ninth everywhere. But if you'd allow me to do a little bit more research on a prospective start time for those schools, once you've had an opportunity to kind of do a little bit more research into the job.
Right, right, that's fine. Don't want to press you, but I know that there are people listening out there who probably have the same question.
Understand.
Availability of inventory. You mentioned that, and that's something that I've been asking about because we know that there are so many, so many other school districts in a similar situation. So any idea?
In my conversations with Mr. Wozni, as early as this afternoon, at this juncture, he was not concerned about availability of inventory.
Great, okay, that does it for me. Thank you.
All right, great.
I know, I think it was during the last conversation, there was some concern over the different types of air filters and things we were looking at in terms of ionization and how that could actually impact some of our students that have allergies and things of that nature. Could you speak a little bit to remind, just for our parents that may weren't on the call, the difference between like the needlepoint and the ionization mechanics and how that works, just just in terms of how the air quality is expected to be safe for all of our student population?
Yeah, I mean, I think that what was raised was the was the ozone emission. I think that was two meetings ago. A parent had spoken during the public forum and said, you know, or I think it was a teacher who said, you know, look out for, you know, make sure you're, you know, with your ozone emission. Mr. Wozni, you know, was was very explicit in his presentation last week, you know, that this technology is being used in schools, it's certified for use in schools and has been deemed safe for for those folks who happen to be in the room, whether it be students or staff. So that was, that was clarified at last week's board meeting. But I think certainly when you talk about health and safety, important to reiterate it.
Thank you. And just from the financial perspective, maybe, Mr. Calavano, if you could talk to us about what that means to tap into the capital reserve and the emergency reserves and how and from what I understand, it will not affect our taxpayers if we were to do this.
So we would have to get approval from the county through a board resolution to withdraw funds out of both both the reserve accounts so we can utilize it so we can move ahead with this project. But right, it will not be increased in the taxes. It's really coming from our reserves that we were able to achieve from last year.
And is the county usually agreeable to approving those?
Yes, especially for this type of work.
Okay, perfect, great, thank you.
Ms. Tenny Clip.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. As a follow on to Ms. Merklinger's question, what does this leave us if we're drawing down from both the reserve and from the capital? What do we have left in there or will that?
I can give you a better understanding of what the balance will be as soon as we have our books with the final order audit of last year. And then we will also know, once we receive the construction or the electrical contractor bids and the final quote for the equipment, I'll have a better number. So I can, just give me like probably a month and I can give you a better number where we stand.
Okay, great, thank you. And let me just see. I think the other question that I had was already answered or asked, so that'll be all. Thanks, Mr. Alper, back to you.
All right, do we have any sense of if there's grants or any other program out there that'll reimburse us for some or all of this by any chance?
The one thing I can tell you is we will apply to FEMA to see if we can receive the seventy five percent reimbursement. I know we spoke to him about the UV lighting to have installed in all the classrooms. And it told us originally that was not going to be a reimbursable item, but we're still going to apply to see if some of this may qualify.
All right, I think that's all I've got. Dr. C, anything else?
That's, that's it for ventilation. And again, I will do some additional conferring with the architects and be able to map out a clearer timeline you know, as it relates to the elementary schools as well as the secondary schools for the community on the tenth. So school reopening, we are, we are, you know, since subsequent to the submission of our our plan, I will tell you in complete transparency, you know, we, along with, you know, no district that I've spoken to have heard back on our plans, you know. But, you know, I would say the, you know, the horse has left the barn on that one. But I, you know, I'm obviously, our plan is fully aligned with the governor's more recent order. And in fact, I understand that, you know, that some of the information which we utilized in our plan as rationale for the delayed opening was actually used and shared statewide, you know, as as kind of a boilerplate. So we're very optimistic that whenever that approval comes, and we understand the state is and our county executive superintendent have a lot of plans to review and a lot of details to review. So we do, of course, appreciate their efforts in that regard. But we are in the midst now of actualizing our plan, which is a, which is a a large undertaking. I'm not going to bore you with all the details of what we're working through right now, but everything from how to ensure that we're, what supplies, instructional curricular supplies and every grade level, every subject area that our students need to have, in addition to then a process by which our students can come to campus and claim those. Obviously, the monumental undertaking of our technology deployment is going well. And we're in the process now of preparing laptops and getting those for elementary students. So we are on target for ensuring that we have a device in the hand of every student by the by the end of of next week in preparation for the first day of virtual school, which is, of course, September fourteenth. But as opposed to going into a lot of detail with those, I thought it would be informative for the community if Ms. D'Mendes spoke a little bit about how we're using those staff development days at the onset. Quick little preface, we know that critical to making this work and increasing the level of comfort and buy-in from our community is that we're delivering a much enhanced virtual product. And that is really what the four or five days that we have before the school year is really all about, is really training as it relates to virtual instruction and the tools that we're using for that. And so I just thought the community would be in the board, and the community would be interested in getting some insights into how we're going to be using that first five days of staff development day, staff development, rather, excuse me.
Great, good evening, thank you, Dr. Kascone. So as we prepare to welcome our students and our families back to fall virtual for the twenty twenty-one school year, we're looking forward to welcoming our staff beginning on Thursday virtually. We are beginning all of our professional development. It will be held from eight AM to three PM each day, and it will be Thursday, September third, and then the week of September eighth through eleventh. All of our professional learning sessions are going to be held via Zoom and in different types of formats. So we will use a different format types in order to accommodate the size of our district in order to make sure that we can accommodate both large group instruction district-wide in a webinar similar to like a board meeting here where staff can ask Q and A from more general topics to Zoom meetings where we're meeting by content area or by grade level, and then even breakout rooms where we can drill down into grade level or very specific small groups. So we're going to begin on Thursday, September third with a welcome back from our superintendent. And then with social emotional learning, we have Dr. Jared Schertz, who's coming in to do psychosocial emotional leadership. He's going to talk to us about what SEL is and how we're experiencing the closures and some of the trauma that we've experienced and the reopening and perhaps some of the fear that our staff is dealing with. So we're going to begin our week with psychosocial emotional learning and a very nice training. Our administrative leadership began the training last week. It was fantastic, so we look forward to be able to provide that to our staff. We will, of course, think about our health and safety protocols. Our principals will meet with each of their staff in their buildings to review the district-wide health and safety protocols as well as health and safety protocols that are school-based. So where to line up and how do we socially distance? How do we enter a building? What's the process for taking our temperature? What's the process when students come into the building and they need to be screened as well? Our visitors' policies, et cetera. When we're thinking about our staff and training for them in terms of instruction, we're really going to dig into the live instruction that is held virtually. And so that's called the synchronous instruction. So we're really going to focus on that live instruction. How do we make sure that it is engaging, that it is effective, that we rethink how we would normally teach in that brick and mortar and now transfer and switch over to this virtual environment? So our staff developers are going to really focus on best practices, instructional strategies to engage students with the content, engage them in the learning, although it is virtual, and how to use all of the technology and software and tools that we have acquired in order to make sure that the instruction is engaging, effective, and differentiated. We're also thinking about our West Orange tech stack. So exactly, you know, all of the different things that we have available to the staff, such as EdPuzzle and FlipGrid and all of our software, our Zoom, all of those tools. How do we integrate those into the instruction so that the students, again, can complete their their work, their assignments, but in a very engaging, meaningful way that facilitates discussion and maintains the rigor and moves through the content so that we can meet our standards? Our supervisors and directors will also meet with each of the staff members by department to unpack curriculum, to think about how we're reimagining our curriculum, how we're shifting from perhaps where we used classroom libraries in the classroom to now how we're accessing reading online. For example, they're going to think about assessment. We're going to talk about grading profiles, et cetera. And after all of the PD, we will be sharing this out with our parents as well, all of the practices and all of the expectations. Expectations then would be our next area, and it would be what are the teacher expectations? What are student expectations? We, for teachers, for example, expect for all of the core content area to be delivered live via a virtual conference format. We expect all our students to be in attendance, right? And so then we also go through all of the expectations for how we're going to engage in instruction. Of course, we'll review our model, our minutes, some timekeeping, some lesson planning. How do we implement routines and procedures? And then I think we'll end with that first week of students coming back, September fourteenth. The teachers will have the opportunity to really plan lessons for the students to set the expectations, routines, procedures, social emotional learning prior to officially entering into the content. And the last thing I would share is that our theme for reentering or road back is though physically, not emotionally distant. So we understand that though we are physically separated, we need to develop our relationships with our students, between our students and our staff. So though physically we don't want to be emotionally distant, we will be wrapping ourselves around that theme for each of our areas and making sure that relationship continues to take precedence over the rigor. And I think that would sum up what we have planned for the first week of professional development.
Thank you, Ms. D'Mendes. Mr. Alper, if you'd like to facilitate questions?
Board folks, Mr. Rothstein, perhaps?
Go, my screen keeps changing and my mute button keeps hiding itself. Thank you, Ms. D'Mendes, thank you so much, and Dr. Kascone. Yeah, I'd mentioned before, when there was an earlier presentation on the reopening plan, that I was particularly impressed with the amount of thought and planning that's going into this initial week to get staff up to speed and trained. I think for a lot of us parents with students in the school district where there's a good deal of anxiety and anticipation. And the more, the more work that you're able to do professionally to make sure that our teachers understand what the plan is and that they have the tools and resources and training that they need to do well. My hope is that my daughter and all of the students in the district will hit the ground running and be successful with this and that our faculty and all of our staff will also feel successful and engaged with the with this new programming. You know, it occurs to me, listening to you speak again, that in so many ways, this is like in a matter of few months, just a few, a few months, retraining the entire staff on what it means to be a teacher and the incredible effort behind that, just philosophically, logistically, the entire approach. And so while I imagine there are going to be many bumps in the road, I hope the bumps will be small and manageable. And I'm really confident in in what I see being addressed, see being addressed here from social emotional learning all the way through the nuts and bolts of, you know, what tools do we have for teachers to use to keep students engaged, to facilitate discussion, to ensure rigor, down to assessment, it's a very different environment for assessment. Just just top to bottom again, thank you so much for the effort that you're all putting in and look forward to hearing, you know, in an ongoing way, more information about what the ups and downs are and how they're being addressed.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Strig Skals.
Yes, I'd first like to commend Dr. Kascone for his visionary leadership. I mean, when we went out back in March, where he moved the spring break forward so that Ms. D'Mendes and her team of mighty warriors were able to spend that time to prepare all of the teachers to meet the needs of our youngsters. That in and of itself was brilliant. And then, of course, he stepped out again when he realized that we could not open effectively and safely for our students. And now with the four days of PD, we're really equipping our our teachers to be successful so that in turn, our youngsters can be successful. Again, you know, what a myriad of offerings. Just incredible. I have stepped back into this world briefly, and so I know the amount of planning and strategizing that goes into opening a school year. This has never happened before, but we never closed a school year before. We didn't think we'd be opening one. But to be able to do staff meetings, PD, all of that, orientations, it's an incredible, an incredible undertaking. And so I just want to commend everyone for a job well done. One question that I do have is assessments. How are we doing assessments? That's always kind of tricky when you're doing it virtually. So I just wonder how we're handling that. And did we learn anything from the last several months where we've made some changes as we move forward?
So if I can start with the learning first, I think we we closed, you know, without notice. And so we did the best that we could with the resources that we had, right? And a lot of our experiences last year did not include live instruction. I think so that's the first thing we learned. We we absolutely have to engage with our students. We have to offer the structure of the live instruction and we have to offer the structure of a schedule. So I think just those two things in itself have provided us a very, a nice framework within which we can build out our teaching and learning, our curriculum, our spoken sequence, et cetera. The second would be really when we're thinking about assessment. I think we're exploring that now, it's still new to us. But as we enter into the conversations, one, we're exploring the technology side, right? How could we administer assessments online? How do we do that in a way that's conducive to the students? How do we do that in a way that's conducive to the student, that can be monitored by the teacher? And so that we do have some strategies that we will be implementing. But I think a critical piece to that is the work that we started with our curriculum development. Now it's going on for years where we shifted from a skills-based curriculum to an understanding curriculum, to a transfer curriculum, and to independence. And I think that's critical for us now because when we're developing assessments, if we're thinking about the assessments and we're really assessing for understanding, that's not something a student can memorize. It's not something a student can just, you know, produce. So when we're thinking about developing our assessments, we're looking to measure understanding. Therefore, when a student sits down, it's not something that's going to be wrote or memory-based. The student really will have to understand the content in order to in order to produce the desired objective. And then some of our tools that we have, so for example, here in this Zoom session, we could break out into individual rooms. Students can go into individual rooms. A teacher can move from room to room, and a student can independently take an assessment where a teacher can monitor. So we're going to leverage our resources, our tools. We'll start conservatively, right, and we'll work our way up and see what works. And I think as Mr. Rothstein said, we'll be very reflective in our practice. We'll come back, what worked, what didn't work. We'll get feedback from our students as well as from our staff. That's another lesson learned, right? The feedback, continue to allow everybody in the feedback loop. We're prepared to do that in our afternoons and on our Fridays so that we can make, continue to make some very, you know, just solid decisions that are in the best interest for the students.
Right. And I, I think it also sends a message that we're beginning with social-emotional learning because the message to the staff, we care about you and we want you to care about our youngsters. So I think, I know you did that by design. That was not, that was not happenstance, but I, I think that sends a clear message that, oh, you have a visitor.
Family member.
Yeah, he's tinier than he was before, so that's a new one. Okay. So I couldn't pretend I didn't see him, you know?
Welcome to my home.
So I think that clearly sends the message to the community that we, we care about where everybody is at this point coming back. There's been a lot of trauma. There's been a lot of anxiety. And so the message again is we care about you and we want to attend to that first. So I, I think that was wisely decided upon. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
I just want to commend Ebony and the entire staff in our district that had input on the curriculum and preparing this school reopening plan. From some of the teachers I taught with, it was like a choose-your-own-adventure book. So you'd head down one path and you think you have everything nailed down, and then all of a sudden, oops, can't do that anymore. So now you gotta rechat to go back, rethink it. So I just think it's a tremendous effort by everyone, so I do commend you for that. Just in terms of ongoing resources, so a little bit different from the spring, from what we're hearing, and I'm just wondering, what kind of resources do we have for the teachers and our staff when they encounter issues or are finding it difficult? I know technology isn't something that's on everyone's, you know, not everyone's as great with technology as others. And so I'm just wondering, outside of the first two weeks of reopening, what additional resources our staff will have should they encounter difficulty or are having problems with doing the synchronous learning? What, what are we offering to our staff?
Sure. So I think the first set of resources are human resources. We have an incredible instructional technology team, and I can't, I think Dr. Kascón during the board awards or rewards, whatever they're called, right? At the end of the year, when we do the awards, we're going to have to acknowledge these faithful, committed group of experts and leaders in their craft. I mean, they are working around the clock as always. They give of themselves their time and they help us learn more about how we can expand. So we have instructional technology team members. We have them assigned across all of the buildings so that they will be a person, a go-to. They are providing the professional development, but they will also be available to our staff for questions, for training, for how to really maximize the technology. From here are basic steps. Let's just start here. This is all you really need to know to get started. To, let's move on to the next step. To, let's now play with some advanced strategies so that we can make this even more dynamic, right? So human resources as our first resource. The second is in our framework, in our afternoons, we've built opportunities for our staff to get PD in the afternoon schedule and on Fridays. So we will maximize that use, right? We will, again, chunk, small, bite-sized pieces. Let's see, let's roll out this one tool. For example, let's measure it. How did that feel? How did it work? What didn't work? And then let's move on to the next tool, right? For our more advanced learners, we will have choice. So there will be different types of sessions, again, from basic, beginner to advanced, or some tools that maybe some of our staff are very well-versed and proficient in some of the things that we already have, but they're looking to experiment and explore with new ideas. So we will have that timeframe within our framework, and then we will have our our resources in our human resources. We also have our content area supervisors who have done a fantastic job of identifying electronic resources for our students, ebooks, e-texts, the calculators online, right, the scientific ones, right? So the manipulatives on, so all of the things that the students need in order to be effective in their workspace. And I would conclude that with the fact that our ALTR administrative leadership teams, our content area supervisors have created lists for the teachers to say, these are all of the instructional materials that this student has to have at home in order to effectively get engaged in the instruction. So those lists have been created. We've communicated them out to the principals. We will have our very first day, September third, we're going to unpack those instructional materials. We will identify when the teachers will need to come into the building to assemble them, pack them up, so that parents on a schedule can come to the buildings, pick up their materials, and that students will have them available for their learning.
That sounds amazing. Thank you. If you could speak a little bit too, how are we going to be utilizing the paraprofessionals? I know there's, we have really great paraprofessionals within the district, so I'm just wondering how they'll be utilized and how they'll work hand-in-hand with teachers being remote.
Sure. So first, paras, first priority is whatever's in the IEP. So for paras assigned to a student, their first responsibility will be to continue to support that student from day one in their classroom, right? So they will be receiving training as well for how to engage in live instruction online, how to support students specifically when they're supporting them in their classroom. And we, at the elementary level, have paired homeroom teachers with paras in some instances where they will serve as that second support for student and the classroom. So we will be engaging them in a variety of ways. To include right now, Ms. Gogarty Fitzgerald is surveying the paras to see who has technology. If they have their own technology, then we'll know that they are able to engage with that. And then Mr. Santiago, our director of technology, is working on getting Chromebooks for paras who don't have the technology. Now that might take just, you know, a little time. We're working on that as quickly as we can. But we will move through that cycle, you know, expeditiously, so that all paras also have the technology to engage with the students and to support them.
That sounds great. So, you know, just a shout out to, to your amazing staff and everyone. I know some of the young athletes that I've been coaching this past week are really excited for the school year to start, and they're looking forward to this. So I'm, I'm looking forward to hear how it works and how the first weeks go. So thank you.
Thank you. I think my head is spinning from the amount of work I just foresee you having to do over the next few weeks. And especially on the PD days, it really sounds like a lot to kind of cram into a very short period of time. Do you think you're gonna, everyone will be able to get all of the learnings they need to and be able to unpack their lessons and be able to redevelop them in that timeframe?
We pass out, wake up. You know, the courage is going to be on the staff, the part of our staff. Our staff is going to have to come in, and they will, courageous and ready and vibrant and and, and just open to learn things in a different way. We're seeing that from our staff. I have to commend them as well. We've held voluntary meetings for grade levels, listening sessions, and I want to say almost everybody comes, right, to every single meeting, and it's fantastic. They don't have to, but they want to. We want to be in school. We want to be with our kids, right? We want to get back to education, and we just know we need to do it safely. So this is our first step. We're entering full virtual, and you know, as someone said earlier, there will be bumps in the road. We will feel them, but you know, we'll stand. We'll get up again, and we'll get up again, and we'll do it well. And so I think our staff, it's going to be a lot of learning. Yeah, right, but we've created a flow that I think is, it makes sense, right? So we're moving from here are the materials you need to be effective, here are the expectations, and this is what quality instruction looks like synchronously. Here are the tools that you can use, and then we're gonna put a dot, dot, dot. Let's process it. Let's play with it. And then we'll come back. What are the next steps? So I think that's just the way we have to go. I think we're gonna start, right? We're gonna start well, and we're gonna get better, and we're gonna get stronger, and you know, we're West Orange.
Great team. We really do, yes. It just makes me nervous. I think, oh, wow, that's a lot to take in, but I think, I love the idea of sort of reimagining the curriculum. That to me is super interesting, and I think Ms. Trix scales talked about the assessment already, so I don't think I have another, any other questions, but thank you for the the report, and I wish everybody good luck in, in learning over the next couple of weeks, and I hope there's a lot of coffee in their lives.
All right. Yeah, I think, you know, exactly what everyone else has said. You know, Ms. Mendez, I think, you know, anecdotally, at least, we appear to be so far ahead of every other district that I'm hearing about. And, you know, it's in no small part to the work that you've put in and everyone on your team and Dr. C's leadership. And, you know, I think we're gonna be feeling really good about things come the fourteenth when we see what our virtual instruction looks like. Thank you. Dr. Kascón, anything remaining?
He's muted. You're muted, Dr. C.
Yes, I was just making sure that you were still paying attention.
Right, right.
Thank you. Glad you're still there. So I would be remiss if I didn't echo the compliments and the acknowledgement of Mrs. Mendez, really our entire team, but, you know, just as superintendent is, behind every effective superintendent is an outstanding assistant superintendent. And Mrs. Mendez has been, been tremendous in, in leading both last year in March and now this year. Her work ethic is impeccable, and as is her intelligence and her critical eye for curricular matters. This is a really effective compliment to what I do. So thank you and to your team and to all of our teachers, our principals, our admin, who are out there working and getting prepared. You are appreciated. Thank you.
All right. Up next, questions from the public on agenda items only. You'll have three minutes. Click the thing to raise your hand. When you come in, be sure to give us your name and your address, and Lauren will have the full instruction set for you.
Thank you very much. And yes, so if you would like to speak during public comment, you do press the raise your hand button that's located on the bottom of your screen. If you're one of the people who are calling in, it is star nine. You only need to press it once. And you can press this button at any time, the raise your hand button or the star nine, as it does put you in a queue. So you do not have to wait for anyone to stop talking. And at this time, we have Melinda Lee. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hello.
Hi, Melinda, how are you?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Melinda Westa actually is, I don't know why it came out Lee. Melinda Westa, Seventeen Park, South in West Orange. And I have two, sorry, I have three questions on the agenda items. My first were regarding the implicit bias training. Would that opportunity be available to the parents and how can they be involved in that process as well? The next question was, are there other more effective ways besides the surveys and observations? Perhaps something that gives us a bit more concrete results or information as to how effective the trainings are? And then my next question is in regards to the virtual learning this time around. All of that training and additional professional training sounds really great. Are we doing anything different to reach and to assist our non-English speaking families or our families who are not as tech savvy, I guess? How are we assisting those families that had trouble last year for this year? And I believe that is all my questions for the agenda items.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And next, pardon the mispronunciation, but Stuart Nachbar, if you can follow the prompt on your screen?
Yes, my name is Stuart Nakar Levin Morris Road. And while I appreciate what the district is doing, the special needs community is being left out here. A virtual learning is not a free and appropriate education which this district and all districts are required to provide for the special needs community. For example, autism spectrum disorder, ASD students who are not going to be able to remotely learn, who have one-to-one paras every day working with them, and they, this is a class, for example, in the high school that has approximately six to 10 students in it in total. And they're not being allowed back in the school, and they're going to be left behind. I've spoken with Ms. Gogarty about this. I've sent numerous emails to Dr. Kascón. And the reaction and what is being done is not acceptable. When we don't have a one-to-one with a teacher, a parrot is not coming here and working with my child. This is not a free and appropriate or proper education as pursuant to the contract of the IEP between the district and this family and the other special needs community families. And I am distraught by what is being done, or should I say distraught by what is not being done. It's not as if we can put a special needs child in front of a computer and say, okay, learn. Okay, do your homework. This is not fair to the special needs community, and this is not fair to the special needs parents or especially the children. They are the ones that are going to suffer. They are the ones that are not going to get a proper, free and appropriate education, and it is ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Tedz Ruro, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen?
Good evening. Tedz Ruro, twenty-four Hutton Ave. I heard a lot of great things today that I'm excited about. Happy to hear that we're losing our local talent and parents in a lot of the projects here. I hope that, you know, we can go a little further and be a little more intentional with local and as we consider vendors for different projects, we'll, we'll consider, you know, local vendors as well. I've heard about partnership with Rutgers for recruitment talent. I'm a Red Hawk on Clear State, I live in I myself, so I'd love to see partnership there as well. And I know that there's a Red Hawk connection, a Lemon Eye portal. And I'm sure that, you know, they'll be happy to have this partnership there as well. I heard about multicultural dinner. I didn't know about that. I'd love to see what that could look like, you know, this year with COVID. I also wonder if we can look into our Lemon Eye population. I posed this idea last time for the tutoring idea, perhaps, but even for teachers and administration, maybe we can look there. I do want to pose a suggestion as you're continuing to have a professional development with your education team. One of the things that I heard from some special education families that I was talking to, just to understand, you know, what can we do? How can we help is, you know, when teachers or case manager or anybody's reaching out, even for the general population, quite honestly, is just ask, you know, how are things at home? You know, how are you doing? You know, before we talk about assignment. You know, before we talk about assignments and, and sort of due dates and things like that, those things matter. You know, often there's something going on and everyone has different family dynamics and challenges. So just kind of make that part of the conversation, I think will be helpful. Um, and the last is, I know that, um, for the Chromebook, the KITI 3 is, um, I believe is to be distributed by the 11th. It is my understanding that, um, the district actually prefers that we use the district issued machines, yes? If that's the case, um, since we're two weeks away, I wonder if we have any more clarity around maybe solid dates that we can look out for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And do we have anyone else at this time using the raise your hand button? If you don't see it, you can just move your mouse if you're on a tablet or so, or if you're calling in. Um, we actually have a couple more. Thank you. Sandra Mordecai, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Good evenings, Sandra Mordecai, 516 Pleasant Valley Way. Um, sorry, I missed the first part of the presentation. I had trouble getting on, but I did hear some of the comments. Um, so thank you for continuing the Amistad Commission training. The district has been doing that for about a decade, as was mentioned by Assistant Principal Jackson. You do learn something new every year. West Orange has had conversations on race in the past with the Human Relations Commission during Cynthia Hadley Bailey's tenure as its chair. So I'm sure there's facilitators within the district and, um, whenever you set the next diversity committee, uh, meeting, maybe there are people in the, in the community who have been facilitators for that program who would be happy to help. So that's something to reach out to. Um, you mentioned the funding got reduced for the Amistad. Are you referring to the $75,000 from the NJEA or are you referring to the state funding? Um, I know in the past, Principal Hush, as chair of the diversity committee, went to Howard University and Principal Moore, when he was chair, went to a few schools, I think Clark and Lannan, a couple of other schools in Georgia. I, I'm just wondering, um, if those trips will continue or if you're going to do something else. West Orange does have a tomorrow's teachers program or used to. Um, hopefully it has not been discontinued. Uh, I just want to add, um, a welcome to Dr. Ves Pignani. Um, in looking at your background, it seems that, um, you know, you're, you're multi-talented there. I like that you, you have a soccer coach background. I'm a soccer fan, but I was just wondering, um, looking at your background, it seems you have one year of HR experience. Do you have any experience in diversity hiring as that is also the theme of tonight's presentations? This year, West Orange parted ways with three people of color. One, the only black male guidance counselor, Assistant Principal at Liberty and Principal Hush was actually his mentor. And most recent, recently, a few weeks ago, Coach Felicia Blake, a 12-year veteran track and field coach, former Olympian, who also coached Olympians. I'm just wondering, what will the diversity hiring process look like? And for Coach Blake's position, we just want to know if that job was posted internally, externally, how many applications were received? And, um, it, it just, it still troubles me now that we're talking about diversity hiring and things like that and diversity in general. I, I don't know what you're going to do about that. The position that, um, you approved last week, will you be transferring the assistant coach who now will be reporting to her husband in violation of the nepotism policy? I just wonder how that's going to be handled because I never heard back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next we have, uh, Aaron Kesselman, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Yes, hi, this is Aaron Kesselman, one Galway Court. I just have a few questions tonight. Um, first off, I know we got instructions for logging on to Power School, the parent portal, um, and that, uh, school, uh, assignments for our kids should be coming out tomorrow. Um, the portal is not active right now. Will that be active tomorrow? Um, secondly, with the assignments, will we also receive a schedule so that we can properly, uh, figure out our own work life slash balancing our life with having to also make sure our kids are on task with school? Um, those are the only questions I have at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Sharon Ortiz, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Yes, good evening. Sharon Ortiz, Sixth Lowell Avenue and High School, uh, teacher. I have a, uh, just a point of, of concern. My question is whether or not there'll be ongoing training and support for our parent partners with the use of technology so that they also feel comfortable with what we're doing with our students. And I also wanted to just let you know that we indeed have a tomorrow teachers program at the high school and I will be teaching that, that class starting in the fall. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Round button there. All right. And once again, anyone else at this time? Now's the time to speak up using the raise your hand button or if you are one of our phone callers, it is star nine. And that seems to be it.
All right, thank you. Dr. Cascone, anything?
To start, um, I'd just like, uh, Mrs. DeMendez to field the question regarding the, um, the, the parent assistance for our second language populations. I think she can speak to some of the things that we have planned for that.
Sure. Um, so by way of our ESL World Language Supervisor, Mr. Felix Plata, he will be hosting, um, parent academies alongside some of our ESL teachers where they're working specifically to train our parents, um, on virtual, uh, professional learning for parents, if you will, right? So we're, we'll be working with our parents virtually to say, this is how we log on. This is how you use your Chromebook. We will be bringing parents in if necessary, um, to do that as well. Uh, our ESL students is, uh, they are a part of our in-person opportunities, right? So our, um, some of our students will be coming in in person, our specialized populations and ESL students happen to be one of those groups. They will be brought in in person to, um, bring out the Chromebook to say, this is how we log in. This is how we engage. These are where your assignments will be. This is how you can expect to, um, experience your learning this year. These are your resources and parents will be able to, um, also participate in that training. And then I think, uh, uh, an important part is that, um, Mr. Plata is bilingual. He speaks Spanish, so do, uh, some of our teachers, myself, right? So, uh, as we're thinking about, um, pushing out professional development, we are able to do that, at least for our Spanish-speaking parents into languages. We do have also, um, some of our staff who speak Creole. If that's needed, then we'd be able to offer that in Creole. Um, while we don't speak all of the languages, those are the two most popular, those are the two most spoken in our district and we would be able to, um, offer support to our parents in those two. We certainly offer that support via all communications. They go out in all three languages.
Thank you, Mrs. DeMendez. Um, I just wanted to say a few words about, um, about special education. Um, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Nakbar's advocacy and his words. Um, they absolutely resonate with me. They've resonated with Mrs. Gogarty and, uh, not to be presumptuous, but I know that they resonate with this board of education. Um, you know, just, just to, you know, a couple of things is, um, and while I, I concur on a number of levels with Mr. Nakbar, um, I would also like to clarify that it's certainly not our intention to simply put a special education student in front of a computer and say, learn. Um, you know, we, we conducted a rather successful, um, extended school year program this summer. Um, we made a lot of adjustments in that even from during the school year. Uh, Mrs. DeMendez spoke earlier about the way in which the paraprofessional is going to support. Um, and while I know that that's not a panacea, it, it is certainly a far cry from simply sitting a student down in front of, of the computer. So I, I do think that that is worthy of, um, of, of qualification. Um, but by the same token, we also know that there are certain populations, you know, of our student body that we need to really focus and try to get them into our schools sooner and, and we are doing that. We are looking at ways to do that. But I think when you, uh, when you listen to the conversation, the discussion about what's happening during that week of PD and you think in terms of ensuring that our buildings, not only from a staff capacity and training standpoint, but also just simply the safety of the facilities as it relates to ventilation, um, notwithstanding the importance of getting students into the buildings, we cannot do that while at the same time, um, not, not being, ensuring that we are entirely prepared and that our environment is completely safe for them to do that. Uh, but rest assured, Mr. Nakbar, we have heard your advocacy and it has impacted, um, on our thought process, um, and the, uh, the level of urgency that we're bringing to bear in order to get certain students into our schools, uh, sooner rather than later. Mrs. DeMendez, uh, do you want to, I know, uh, you had, uh, mentioned, uh, someone had mentioned the Amistad and the, Mrs. Tonaciff had mentioned the Amistad and the funding piece. Uh, might Mr. Figurito be able to, uh, answer that question?
Yes, and he is on, he's on the panel.
Uh, hello, thank you, Mrs. Mordecai, uh, for your question. I hope, uh, everything is, uh, going well. Um, so yeah, we got to go back to the summer of 2019. In the summer of 2019, the New Jersey Amistad Commission was going to hold their annual summer symposium in Jamestown. I believe they asked, they could fund up to, I'm looking for 25 educators, uh, to apply. Uh, they would, they would be transported via bus, uh, to Jamestown where room and board would be provided and they would study, uh, Jamestown, uh, and the effects of 1619. On the application, it did say pending, uh, I want to see like budget approval pending something with the finances. To make a long story short, uh, one of our teachers was accepted. Uh, she was ready to go and she received the unfortunate letter from the New Jersey Amistad Commission that due to, uh, budget cuts, uh, they cannot hold last year's symposium in Jamestown. I honestly do not know, um, how the New Jersey Amistad Commission is funded. Um, and I don't know if it's part NGA, part state, but at this point, that's about as much as I know about the topic.
Thank you, Mr. Figurito. Um, just want to, um, take a few moments to, to address, uh, Mrs. Mordecai's, uh, comments. Um, first, this relates to our, um, our executive director personnel, Dr. Ves Pignani. Um, first I would say that, uh, Dr. Ves Pignani has a open door policy, um, as all members of my senior cabinet do. Um, we all have open door policies, um, and, uh, we are all accessible, uh, to our community. And so certainly, um, can absolutely understand, um, you know, that Mrs. Mordecai's, um, perspective is, is, is probably not a unique one. In other words, that, you know, and, and I, as the superintendent know from having listened to the feedback of our community in terms of the priority of diversifying our hiring. So, um, Dr. Ves Pignani is, is very well aware, as am I, of the importance of this initiative to our community and the importance, uh, as it relates to the, the perception of our professional competence that we move the needle in this regard. Um, so regardless of, you know, how much experience Dr. Ves Pignani has or how much experience I have as a superintendent, we're here, we're committed, our doors are open, um, and we fully expect to be held accountable for that, um, and look forward to that. Um, as far as, uh, the nepotism bylaw, I, I would just like to clarify that, um, that we have been in the process of updating our policy manual. The nepotism bylaw, under which we are actually currently operating, is in fact the Strauss Esme nepotism bylaw. It is one of the mandated policies or bylaws that has been adopted by the board. Um, and, uh, when reviewing that bylaw and comparing it to the situation to which Mrs. Mordecai alludes, which I'm not at liberty to comment on, as is personnel related, I am, um, quite confident that the process as it unfolded, uh, was not a violation of our, uh, board-approved nepotism bylaw. Um, in terms of the information, uh, which Mrs. Mordecai seeks, I will have to consult with, um, our board secretary and board council to determine whether that is information that is better requested through an open request. Um, as far as the parent portal, um, I can tell you that it's a great question. Um, the, it, we are scheduled to open the portal tomorrow and yes, upon opening the portal, uh, you will then have access, uh, to your teacher assignment. Relative to the daily schedule, I would just call folks' attention to the correspondence which I sent out last week. Um, it did have a link to the virtual schedule for all the different grade levels and while it's not overly specific for the afternoon, it does give you some insights to what expect, what to expect and understandably how you can, uh, parents can structure their own work data, support their children if they have elementary children, young children. So really the, the, the majority of the synchronous or live instruction that will take place will be between nine and 12, Monday through Thursday. That will be the time of live instruction and it will be the time when core academic instruction is delivered. The afternoons, Friday, will be largely asynchronous and self-guided, meaning that, um, that children and parents can engage in that work and do that work, um, at times that are more convenient for them. There will be some related arts live instruction that happens in the afternoon for both, you know, related arts and then also instrumental music for grades four and five. The details of those schedules will be forthcoming from building principals as they communicate out, uh, to their school communities. So there will be a lot more detail, um, related to that in the upcoming weeks, but that schedule that was shared by that correspondence last week will, will shed some, uh, shed some, uh, valuable light for parents on what the day-to-day schedule will look like. And I believe that, um, answers the questions as presented, Mr. Alper.
I believe so. All right, thank you, Dr. Cascone. All right. Next up, may I have a motion? We're going to split personnel. May I have a motion for items one through six in personnel?
So moved. I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to, um, thank, uh, and acknowledge, uh, the folks that, um, are willing to, uh, participate in the extracurricular activities. Um, I'm really excited. I think it's one of those pieces of the social emotional learning for our students is to, um, have those extracurricular activities. So, um, thank you to, to all those faculty members that were willing to, to figure out how to do it virtually or outdoors. So thank you.
Absolutely. Anything else? All right. Mr. Calvano.
Mr. Wrothstein?
Yes.
Ms. Tonaciff?
Yes.
Vice President Trix Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, next, item seven, public hearing for superintendent's employment contract. So what this is, is an extra bonus public comment period only on the topic of the proposed amendment to the superintendent's employment contract, which simply put, uh, amends the existing contract solely to add a specific mileage reimbursement. So at this time, if you have any public comment on that, uh, please click to raise your hand.
Okay, thank you. Once again, we have, uh, public comment. Just choose the raise your hand button or star nine if you're calling in. And we have nobody.
All right, seeing none, may I have a motion for personnel item seven?
I'll motion.
And seconded.
All right, any discussion?
Yes, um, can we get a further explanation on exactly what that means for the public's benefit, what the revision really is? Mr. Calvano.
So this current contract, um, states that he would have to, uh, complete a log of places where he attended, um, and then submit a monthly voucher, including school building, school building, school building to a meeting out of district, in district on a Saturday or Sunday. You may have to complete that to get reimbursed. The change in this contract now will indicate that he gets a $200 a month allowance without submitting the paperwork. If I can tell you, the paperwork is a lot of work sitting there trying to, every day, where you go, where you come from, and this just makes it a lot easier for himself, for us, for record keeping, for $200. It's nothing new in the district. Uh, we have it as part of administrator's contract and cabinet members also have it.
I was going to ask you that. So theirs is one lump sum. They don't have to keep a log with their daily travels.
Correct. They also get a mileage allowance too.
So we're just aligning Dr. Cascone's contract to the other administrators.
To the cabinet members and also to the administrators. And that's the only change in the contract.
Great, thank you.
All right, anything further? Seeing none, Mr. Calvano, let's vote.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Wrothstein?
Yes.
Ms. Tonaciff?
Yes.
Vice President Trix Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, next, curriculum and instruction, items one and two. May I have a motion?
So moved. I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. Calvano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Wrothstein? Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tonaclef?
Yes.
Vice President Trigscals?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, next, finance, special services, items one and two, and business office, items one through seven, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm just so happy to see that word, budgeted.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five times.
Anything else? All right, Mr. Calvano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tonaclef?
Yes.
Vice President Trigscals?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, next, petitions and hearings of citizens, public comment on any topic at all. I think you know how that works at this point. Lauren?
Thank you. I guess, go ahead and hit that raise your hand button. Again, you can push it at any time. You don't have to wait for the next or the last speaker to finish. And Melinda Huerta, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hello?
Hi.
Hello, my name is Melinda Huerta, 17 Park Drive South in Yesore. And, sorry, give me a second. Okay, so my two questions are really like follow-up questions on previous comments I have made on previous board event meetings. The first is in regards to having possibly a town hall or a special meeting in Spanish for our non-English speaking families and putting Dr. Cascone and Mrs. Menendez's bilingual ability to work. And, and the second would be in regards to the goal setting meeting that I was able to attend. When will our board event goals for the 2020-21 school year be approved or finalized? And I believe for that, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and do we have anybody else at this time? The raise your hand button, if you don't see it, maybe if you have a tablet or if you're on an iPad, you just move your finger on the screen and it'll pop up for you. Okay, yes, Erin Kesselman, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Yes, I had a couple of quick follow-up questions, Erin Kesselman, One Galway Court. I don't know if it was addressed on the K through three Chromebook distribution on what the status of that is and whether that's going to happen this coming week or if we're going to be wrapped to the wire on that. And school supplies, will that be addressed when we get teacher assignments? That's the only, all the follow-up questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's my son.
Okay, and Tez Warro, if you could please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, Tez Warro, 24 Hutton. This is just more of a request for the future, you know, to think about, to continue to have some of the meetings virtually. Ideally, we want parents involved, you know, at each level, PTA, BOL meetings, and we want everyone to come to BOL meetings for regular meetings, not just when there is, you know, hot topics on the agenda. And I think if it's virtual, some of it at least, I don't know how it works with voting and wireless network order and IRS and all of that, but just consider it because it does make it accessible to most, including myself. I'm fairly active and yet I have to worry about childcare and things like that. So just the consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And last call for, whoops, there we go, Sandra Mordecai, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Yes, hi, thank you. Sandra Mordecai, Festive Pleasant Valley Way. I see on the agenda where you're fixing the retaining wall at Hazel, and I remember in past board meetings, we kept tabling and putting on hold due to budgets, the Washington retaining wall. When will that come up to be fixed? It's been a couple of years now. Or will you just purchase the land next to it and just knock it down altogether? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And final last call, anyone with the raise your hand button at the bottom of the screen? Or if you're on the phone, it is star nine. And that seems to be it.
All right, thank you, Dr. C.
Oh, you're muted again, Dr.
Fantastic, fantastic. I'm back. All right, so thank you, Ms. Huerta, Ms. Lee Huerta. Yes, and thank you for joining us the other night for our, our public board goal setting. It was nice to have you in the house and I appreciated that recommendation relative to a bilingual town hall panel discussion. I shared that with Mrs. Demendez and we will, we are planning that. Whether or not we'll get it off the ground in advance of the school year or shortly thereafter, it is on tap for sure. And we might be inviting some others to participate as well, some other bilingual staff that will, you know, put my Spanish to shame maybe. Mr. Kesselman, thank you for coming back up to the mic and, and reminding me about the, the Chromebook question. So the, the technology department is putting out pretty regular updates that are going out both through social media as well as school messenger updates on the website. And, and it is, they, they are making good progress, but they are likely going to need a part of next week to, to finish those, those, those pickups. But from what I've seen from those, that messaging that's come from the technology department, they've been pretty consistent, pretty regular and proactive about putting, putting updates out to the parent community as to when to expect that. As far as supply lists, yes, we are, we're kind of in that deliberative process right now, and I, I understand that that's not ideal because of the timeframe. I would say though, that based upon when we're really going to dig into content, which will probably not be until the week of the 21st, not to say we're not going to do any of the week of the 14th, but we're really going to front load on the week of the 14th with a lot of relationships, a lot of, you know, social, emotional, and then really start to move into content in the 21st. So we still have about three weeks or more before you'd really have to have supplies in hand. But what we're trying to do right now, Mr. Kesselman, is understand what we can kind of, what we can kind of provide is the school district, and we're really putting a critical eye on that to try and not overburden parents with the purchase of a lot of materials, though it would be easier to do that on some level for us, but we want to really avoid that. And so we're trying to be very judicious in the kinds of things that we're asking parents to gather and at the same time recognize that, you know, it's, you need some notice in order to, to get those things. But we are working on that. That is one of the planning points that we're doing with our principals right now, and there will be clarity on that forthcoming from your building principals. As far as Washington School, good question from Mrs. Mordecai. So the, the Hazel retaining wall had the benefit of being a much less involved project, much less expensive project. I think it ended up, it was under, under $100,000, correct? Yeah, it was quite, quite, you know, whereas the Washington retaining wall is a several hundred thousand dollar project. That being said, and it was, that was one of the projects that was included in our large referendum, but I think we recognize that that might be one of the projects that we need to try and look in this next budget cycle, particularly if we're able to do what we did last year with moving capital reserve over and get that done within the next budget cycle, whether it be through local lines or through our capital reserve that's on tap. We recognize that we can't really wait for a referendum to get that done. So that's at the top of the list of capital improvements we need to get done. That's all I have, Mr. Alper.
Thank you, sir. On the board goals, I think we'll definitely, if not the next meeting, I think certainly the following meeting, so definitely one of the September meetings, I think we'll probably have those, you know, just a matter of writing them up and getting the wording perfect and getting that done. So I think that'll be soon. In terms of virtual meetings, I think the one thing that I know we want to do is find a way to, once we are able to return to having in-person meetings, to find a way to still stream the video of those out, which is proving to be a surprisingly complicated technical issue, but it's still being discussed and worked on. So I think that's where that is. Next up, board member reports, Mr. Rothstein, got anything?
Yeah, nothing good, but I'll take a stab at it anyway. For starters, I just wanted to, my mind is on our, the seniors who graduated at the end of the last school year and who are starting their experience with, with college, with career, with trying to find their way into this new and crazy world. I just wanted to let you know that I know many of us are thinking of you and sending you our best wishes and know that you will represent your hometown well, wherever you are and whatever you're doing. Also wanted to acknowledge as I've been having increasing conversations with parents of students in the schools and members of my neighborhood and community and throughout town, the, the challenges and anxiety that a lot of families are dealing with right now. I know that we feel that as well in, in, in my family. And presentations like what we saw tonight, I think go a long way toward really alleviating a lot of that. And, and while there's so much that we can't control, I, I'm so impressed as a member of the board, but also as a parent of, of a student in the school district, at what we're accomplishing and how well we're preparing for this. I was on a phone call with several old friends this weekend, some of whom are administrators, district-level administrators in other school districts and other parts of the country and teachers as well. And we were sharing notes on what it is that we're doing in our districts and they were envious of what we're doing. They feel that they don't have the leadership and the preparation that they hear of what we're doing here in West Orange. And it really made me, it's not so much that I wanted to gloat. Obviously, we want everyone across the country to be doing well, but it made me very proud of the leadership that we have here and the effort that we're putting in at the district level here. We've got so much talent in the administration and in the staff, the teachers in the school district here who have told us at meetings here and who have sent emails about how enthusiastic they're feeling and how much they want to get back to teaching their students. There's, there's a lot of eagerness to just get back to the mission of the schools and I'm very optimistic about what it is that we're going to accomplish this year. So a phrase that's come up repeatedly is this, this concern over whether this is going to be a lost year. And for what it's worth, I am feeling so much more confident as time goes on and the more that I learn, that not only won't this be a lost year, this is going to be, but by virtue of the professional development, by virtue of all of the efforts that have been put into preparing for this, I think that this is going to be a year that is anything but lost, where there will be new opportunities and I'm confident that our, our faculty and our administration will find ways to pull out opportunities that might not have existed otherwise for our students and for our community. So just wanted to take this opportunity to send my best wishes to everyone on all sides of, of this cooperative effort in our community and let you know that I'm, I'm cheering us all on and I believe that this is going to be a, a good opportunity for us all to learn and move forward together. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Ms. Trigscals?
Thank you, Mr. Alper. I just have a few housekeeping kinds of questions, wondering about remaining vacancies that we may still have, Dr. Cascone? I'll start with that one. And included in that might be nurses, because I know at one point in time, we were looking for additional nurses. Should I just keep going?
Oh, Dr. Cascone, strike three.
All right, I'm out of here. Just kidding. Saved by my mute button, no. I, you know, I cannot say, give you a comprehensive list, Ms. Trigscals, we have a number of retirements, leaves and things of that nature, but I can be prepared to give the board a report on that within the next 48 hours.
All right, and then the other one, I was thinking about the retrofitting or whatever we want to call it with the Plexiglas and the offices for the administrative assistance, how that's proceeding. And then finally, the school pandemic response teams. I know that principals were given the charge of getting those teams in place and I recall, I don't know if it was Ms. Merklinger, someone asked for a schedule of meetings, oh, Ms. Tonaclef, sorry about that. So I too am very interested in how we're proceeding, who's on those teams. I know that the road back was very prescriptive and who should be on those teams. So I just want to be assured that we have parent representation, teacher representation, we've got the nurse and the custodians and students at the high school level. So I think that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Mordecai?
So I just wanted to recognize, in the spirit of the social emotional learning, yesterday was grief awareness day for those that have had or lost someone to suicide. So with a lot of the anxiety and concerns that our parent community and our teachers are having, I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that we do have resources and to reach out and not be afraid to ask for help. You know, I know Ms. Gardi Fitzgerald has a lot of resources out there, Ms. Butler has a lot of resources out there, so please tap into the school district and community if you are feeling lost or having that anxiety. I can't stress that enough. Ken and I had a very productive meeting with Dr. Cascone and we want to thank Councilwoman Michelle Castellino for getting together the town officials. We met with them to go over the school reopening plan and it was a really great meeting. We had a lot of folks from throughout the town. And I just want to continue to thank Nick Allegrino from the OEM for continuing to provide our students and families with Wi-Fi. And then Teresa De Nova, who's our health official, she thought we did an excellent job with the reopening plans and all the items related to health and safety. So it was a really great meeting. They were very impressed with all the work that had gone into it. So again, I just want to thank everyone who participated in that. We had folks from the WPD, the WFD, OEM, the Health and Safety Department, just a lot of folks that really had a lot of great things to say about what our, what Scott and Ebony and the team had put together. So I don't know if Ken, if you had anything that you want to add to it, but that was really all I had for tonight. And I just want to say best of luck to all of our students and staff as we look forward to the school year. And I think it's going to be a very interesting school year. I'm excited to see how we adapt. Our town is resilient and we always come back, so I expect this to be a stronger year than it was last year and looking forward to hearing some great things.
All right, Ms. Tonaclef?
Thank you. I don't really have much. I just want to echo a couple of things that my colleagues have said and just, we know it's a crazy time and, you know, everybody should just hang in there and we're going to get through this and we're going to learn. It is, I like my colleague, Mr. Rothstein's optimistic point of view and I think, you know, I think that's a great way to approach things, is looking at the positives that are going to come out of this and what might be possible for the future. So that's really all I have tonight. So thanks, everybody, for being here tonight and sharing your thoughts and questions with us.
All right, thank you. Thank you. And I don't think I've got anything to share at the moment, so thank you. Our next board meeting will be held right here on the internet again, 7:30 PM, September 10th. That's a rare early September meeting for the Board of Education. We'll see you then. We are adjourned. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. And this is just to announce that when I end the meeting, it will end for both those on screen and off screen and no other business will be conducted once the meeting ends. Thank you all and have a great night.